Roll call, please.
Michael Chandler.
Here.
Del Curry. Jordan Delong.
Here.
Abse Denny.
Here.
Terry Hickey.
Here.
Terry Hodges.
Here.
Dusty Madewell.
Here.
Kenny Smith.
Here.
Rick Wall.
Here.
Michael Woodley.
Here.
Mr. Woodley, you lay this prayer.
Sheriff and Father, just a few thanks for the stage you've given us, Lord. Thanks, God, for... Coming together as a body and make sound decisions.
So I'll stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Takes us to item number five on the agenda. Approve, disapprove minutes for August fifteenth meeting is printed. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Woodley made the motion, I need a second.
I'll second.
Who was that? Kenny? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Number six, approve, disapprove, committee A report. I think you've got that, Mr. Tabitha.
Yes, sir. Budget Committee met on August thirty-first at five-thirty PM. On the list was have House and Senate bill to rescind private act. House Bill number eleven forty-nine and Senate number eleven forty-two. Purchasing Act of twenty-five-hundred dollars so that we can be under the ten-thousand-dollar rule. Motion was made by Terry Hickey, seconded by Mr. Delong. All in, all those were in favor. And I'll make that in form of a motion.
Does everybody understand what we're doing? It's, it's... Explain it, David.
Okay. When the auditors done their report, even though we were, we were done clear for the, up to the ten-thousand by the state auditors. But on record was a private act from nineteen eighty-six for twenty-five-hundred dollars that anything over twenty-five-hundred bid out had, you know, had to be bid out. So the auditors brought to our attention says, you're either gonna have to bid everything twenty-five-hundred and up or get that changed to what everyone else's ten-thousand?
That's what the statute is.
The statute's ten-thousand. So that's the reason this is here.
I'll make that motion.
Well, how many signatures gotta be on that?
Pardon?
How many signatures gotta be on this ten-thousand dollars?
No, I mean, ten-thousand is keep us from having to put it in the paper.
Just, just, we, we can go up to ten-thousand without having to bid it out.
We have to get three bids.
Oh, okay.
Okay? I mean, we would want ten, three, to me, we would want three bids, but anything over twenty-five-hundred right now, you have to have them. And they're wanting us to run them in the paper, even though through media they say that you don't. You know, you can do them there, so that's a...
Another benefit.
Another difference between the two also. But it'd be January now before this can even hit the floor in Nashville. Because they have to carry it through. I've talked to both of them, and if this passes, they will take care of it for us.
I'll actually prepare the formal resolution if you all vote on it tonight for submission to the General Assembly.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Woodley, Ms. Denny had done made the motion.
Oh, well, I'll second.
Can you second? Uh, I guess we need roll call on this, hurry.
Michael Chandler. Jordan Delong.
Yes.
Abse Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Madewell.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Rick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
Any one wish to change your vote? Motion carried.
Next on the agenda was the Health Department Correction Amendment, debit fund and balance. So I have here, it was out of thirty-nine thousand line item. We're doing a hundred and forty-one thousand to fifty-five-one-ten-three-ninety-nine? No. Three-oh-nine, sorry. And then a hundred and fifty-four thousand to fifty-five-one-ten-three-ninety-nine. This was done at the last meeting, however, I did not have the line item numbers to make that a formal motion, so now I'll make that in a form of a motion.
I'll second.
You second? Okay. Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Abse Denny.
Yes.
Terry Hickey.
Yes.
Terry Hodges.
Yes.
Dusty Madewell.
Yes.
Kenny Smith.
Yes.
Rick Wall.
Yes.
Michael Woodley.
Yes.
One wish to change your vote? Motion carried.
Next on the agenda was more of a discussion. We discussed the solid waste grants. We have a convenience center grant. It is a grant contract of thirty-four, thirty-two thousand four hundred dollars. A match of thirty-six hundred dollars for a total of thirty-six thousand dollars. Twenty-six thousand dollars of that being for fencing and ten thousand dollars being for septic water and electric. Next was the, um, that's a convenience. Was the used automotive fluid recycling grant. And it is for a total of thirty-two thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars with no match. And that being fifteen thousand going for the cost and, uh, to construct a new automotive fluid collection center. And then the capital purchase of a one, three-hundred-and-eighty-five-gallon collection tank with spill pan, a hundred-gallon antifreeze collection tank with spill pan, an eighty-six PM electric oil pump, a canopy for a collection tank, a concrete pad, and a used oil crusher, filter crusher. And those will be in a total of seventeen thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars. We also discussed that the container grant, we looked it up, and it will not be ready to apply for until, actually, April of twenty-twenty-four. So we will not be able to get containers on a grant until then. We also discussed, um, the, to put a bid out for two-thousand-gallon tanks and bid on a card system. Pending the fire marshal approval distance of a hundred and fifty feet. Has he got back with you on that?
Yes.
He did approve it?
The fire marshal did approve it.
Okay.
Last week, he finally, he called me back. And I told him to start with, I thought it was three-hundred foot. And Shannon and I, we started talking about it, and he says, I don't believe it's three-hundred foot. So we went out there and stepped it off again, you know, to make sure, so it's a hundred and fifty foot. And so it was a hundred and fifty foot, and then when the fire marshal called, because I done told him three-hundred. And so when he called, he said, well, you can be within a hundred and fifty feet. I said, well, that's good, because I told you it's the wrong number to start with. So he, he's, he has blessed that now to, for that.
And this is something that we are just getting bids on to see if this is something that we can even afford at this time. So there was no action done because it was, we're just gonna see if it's, will be in the budget before we bring this to the full commission. Sheriff Brock came to discuss a grant of public safety, grant that was, check that was deposited in the amount of six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. He was gonna move that to fifty-four-two-ten-five-ninety-nine, and that, he was gonna use it for upgrades within the jail. He also was discussing overtime reimbursement, um, that would help him with his overtime as long as it was being used for drugs, correct? Drug Task Force?
Yeah, it's through the Tennessee National Task Force, which is managed by the TBI. Uh, so if the case is made, they will pay, reimburse up to twelve hours' worth of work on that case if it's overtime. We front it out of our overtime dollars. We submit it to them, and then probably like a thirty-day process, they will reimburse us for that. It's something that we've explored. We haven't, as far as I know, it's never been done here. I know some places where it has been, we'd just like, I'd just present it to them, that we'd like to have the opportunity to try. The money comes out of my overtime line, and if you see it's not working, I'm the one that gets in for it.
And that was the only other thing, right?
And then we talked about the Tennessee Highway Safety Office Grant, which is a five-thousand-dollar reimbursement grant through the governor's initiative, the Tennessee Highway Safety Office. They award these high-visibility grants to agencies. Van Buren County received five thousand dollars. There was about forty-one-hundred of that to be used in overtime or salary to work saturations during campaigns that are sponsored by the state, such as the Click and Ticket campaigns, the Booze and Lose it campaigns, saturations within our community on like New Year's or high-profile dates, as well as if we were invited, like we are occasionally by the Highway Patrol to participate in sobriety checkpoints, that if we were paying overtime for that, it would be reimbursed through them as well. The balance of that eight-hundred-and-some dollars is for equipment, and what we've been talking about is trying to get our hands on some traffic cones for the sheriff's office right now. If we need some, we're borrowing from the police department or from Mr. Rose, the highway department.
And those were discussion points, because they were grants that he received, so no action needed to be taken. And then Budget Committee adjourned.
I mean, I don't see as we need any more action from that, do you? Takes us down to number seven. Approve, disapprove, Terry Stewart to planning commission to replace Michael Solomon for the remainder term ending twelve of twenty-twenty-five.
With, with the planning commission, Mr. Solomon's not been here for, missed several, several meetings, almost a year. Anything over three continuous misses there, you can replace, but I've had people try to call him, to call me back, and I cannot get any response at all, so I've just went ahead with, with this. Since sister-in-law and brother both was, tried to get a hold of, or, you know, talk to him, or did talk to him, or was trying to, and, and I got no response, and I left a message on the phone and everything else, so that's the reason I've asked for him to be replaced with Terry Stewart. By the guidelines, he's already missed enough that, that he could be removed.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Woodley made a motion to approve Mr. Stewart.
I'll second.
Mr. Wall? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Uh, number eight, approve or disapprove acknowledgement of the three-star physical letter with Van Buren County letterhead for the last three months paperwork.
Yes, what, what that was, we had the paperwork last month to, to vote on just recognizing this here. It's, it's something that has to be done. Well, I was told that we, that we didn't have the proper letterhead there, so I pulled it from the, the meeting. But you have this in last month's meeting there, and all this is, is just acknowledgement there for the letter to go for the three-star program.
We have the correct letterhead on it.
We have the correct letterhead on it.
That's all we...
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Woodley made a motion to, to approve. Need a second.
I'll second it.
Hodges? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number nine, do we have any discussion from the public? You got anything? All right. We'll move on to number ten, old business. What we got under old business?
I don't have any old business.
Anybody else got any old business?
Updade with the garbage truck.
Updade with the garbage truck.
Updade with the garbage truck.
Garbage truck. Uh, he brought me a, a list of things, buy ten gallon of oil and I think ten gallon of antifreeze, two-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars labor. Will have everything done on it except the brake light, taillight, so if you want me to go ahead and have those fixed. You know what I'm saying, that's... Where it's staying.
I feel like if we're already this far in, we might as well go for the rest of it.
We need, we'd be road, roadworthy, I think. Needs to be get, need to get it ready.
Well, I mean, that's, that's all it likes. Now, the new truck started coating this week, and I talked to a fellow, he's, he has the stuff to coat it with, and he's gonna check it tomorrow, gonna try to regen it. It's not regening itself, so he's gonna try to, to get it to regen itself. If it don't, then we'll probably have to take it to the dealer or someone that familiar with it.
Any else?
New business?
New business.
Uh, I'd like to talk about getting cameras put up at the dump.
Cameras at the dump?
Yeah.
Which dump?
The Spencer Dump.
Do we have internet over there? We won't. We probably won't ever get any pickup, if we don't put internet over there.
Put internet over there.
Got a question in the bag.
As long as you have a solar panel, it'll keep it powered. You don't have to have internet to, to do security cameras. You can just have a box that records it, you know, kinda old school, like on a hard drive, and you can review it that way. Internet's not required.
Yeah, that's just something I was trying to prevent. Was the old way.
You got any, uh...
Just bringing it up, we need to get something over there.
Or we need to get onto our people over there and let them start catching the lady for throwing garbage away. That's what he's talking about.
And I think we need more policies and procedures as far as what they're allowed to, to do and not do. Because they're bringing it in a personal truck, and that's how they're skimming the scales.
You got a commercial person bringing it in.
We're gonna discuss, you know what I'm saying, explore the options of getting them in.
Well, that'd go, I think, Committee B, is that not right? Is that right? I, I, I think it's B. I'll check and make sure, and then I'll send out a notice here.
There's been a warning already given, right?
More than one.
Yes.
I would think the next defense would be, uh, no longer definite at our facility.
But I, I also ask...
It's under A.
A, it's under A, okay, I'm sorry. That'd be under A, but...
We will address that, Mike.
Thank you.
You also what now? What were you saying?
Are there any guidelines that y'all want to add to it there?
I think it just needs to be discussed further. We can sit down and brainstorm and come up with a solid plan to prevent it from happening again.
Then on it to...
We'll meet in a work session, discuss it.
That's fine. I'd be okay with that.
What time is everybody gonna be here next week? Them meetings you was telling me today, what time are they? Next week, next Tuesday?
Well, next, oh, next Tuesday at ten o'clock and one o'clock, they, they will be a video of the grant for, for the containers and stuff. That, that's next week.
I thought it might be later in the day is what I was thinking.
One, one of them is ten o'clock and the other's at one o'clock.
But it's the same video?
It, it's a video.
I mean, same video at ten, same video.
No, no, no. It's, it's, it's two different grants. The, the two grants that you see here is, is what it, what it will be. One of them's at, instead of them having them both together, one's at ten and one's at one. And I can't tell you which is which. And oh, by the way, excuse me for just a second, Mr. Terry is right there. I, I apologize for not addressing him a minute ago.
Okay.
That, that's the new...
Okay. Any other maybe state?
Other than that, I'll...
Yeah.
Yeah, they've done that already. Got any new business or...
Is there any, uh, is there any update about the water, what they're doing up there at the city?
That, I couldn't answer you, 'cause I have to talk to them about that, because I don't know of any updates there that... How they're coming along with any grants or whatever now. I know there was a, a grant thing up in Knoxville this last week, you know what I'm saying, that you're gonna talk about grants, but I couldn't make it up there to that one.
This sheet that you've got in front of you that says info only, talking about the solid waste, uh, private act and solid waste, Mayor Sullivan has talked to Charlie Curtis, and he advised him to go to Ben Rogers. Ben had a, a group of attorneys working with him that he could draw us up a, a private act from what this is, this is for information only. If anybody has anything to add to or wanna take away from this list, let David know, and then we will proceed with it to get it to Mr. Rogers, and after he gets our, uh, gets us the draft drawn up on this, we'll let Mr. Upchurch look it over. And go forward with that. That's what that's for.
What was the range of time that it was stockpiled before this past year?
The range like, this last year was, I think the longest was ninety days, and that's in front of my house.
I meant previous.
The guidelines, I think they had forty-five days. But they didn't pay any more attention to guidelines or, or anything that they was written up for, they disregarded completely. Because there was no teeth, there was no fine, there was no reason for them to follow any rules or regulations, because there was nobody there to enforce it.
I know that there was more of a, a, a more difficult time this past year, but I meant the previous years, what was the timeframe that it was typically distributed?
I thought it was thirty days. It didn't happen on the place I be, but I thought it was thirty days it's supposed to be spread.
Was it not a sixty-day mon, sixty-day period in there that they could in case of, of bad weather?
Something happened, they had so many days, but they were supposed to, to get it in a certain period of time. And they have, I don't know if they've done anybody's under the timeline unless they, it was yours. Did, did they make yours under the timeline? And see, and, and here's another thing that happened too. They changed companies.
Yeah.
And the other co, the first company was a whole lot better than this one here.
They had lots of trucks to distribute it.
Yeah, this truck just has...
Well, they, they had the equipment to move it with. And, and these here, they could care less, I mean, in front of my house, there's an orange flag I can see sitting in the living room. They are not supposed to have any equipment or throw any of it in front of that orange flag. That, that's the boundary. Sitting there one Saturday morning, guess what? There the spreader come through, every bit of it was in front of the house. Hour later, here come the payloader down the main road, and I thought, what in the world is that racket there? They was straf, scraping the county road. I thought, I hope you knock a big hole in it, 'cause we're gonna entertain you. But they didn't.
Well, the last job I done here in Warren County, uh, I seen it. Trucks wouldn't there fast enough, I mean, they, when the truck come, they didn't wait on it, it was done. But they wouldn't as many trucks coming as they did when there was sixteen trucks coming, fourteen trucks coming. I, I mean, it might've been five or six trucks a day, and they can't spread as fast.
That, that there, it was stockpiled forever. Everybody that drove through there, if you had the air conditioning on, you could smell it when you got further on down the road. I mean, it was that bad. And one of the few times, and I can't say this caused it, but I went out one more, one Saturday morning, and it about knocked me to my knees, because it's coming from the west. Next Sunday morning, Sunday morning, I went into A-Five and had to go to the hospital. I can't prove it, see it, but I hadn't had any trouble until then. That's, that's why I wrote in, in, in that thing there that you need to have an air monitor there.
They need to spread it faster, I mean, I've used it, but I mean, they do need to spread it faster.
You see anything need to change there, Howard? Or add to it?
No, no, not really. What's gonna happen if they don't do it in fourteen days?
Right now? Well...
Who's gonna enforce it?
Well, if, if all these logs, or if they have to do the log for they pull in, they gonna have to sign in.
Why don't we make them put up some money before they start doing it?
Well, I don't know, but the thing about it is, we cannot discriminate against a farmer. Now, let's, let's remember that right on, on the start, because if you start making it too tough, then we can get into lawsuit, isn't that right, Howard?
There's, there's a statute that deals with nuisance and those type things. So, yeah, you're right. We looked at this in Bledsoe County, had a, about a two-hour meeting. Probably watched it, attended a month and a half ago. Mayor Sullivan attended it over there, had a mayor from Polk County that was there also. Yeah, this, this act he's talking about, it, it's got a lot of teeth in it, and it, it protects the farmers.
I don't know that we should per se find the landowner, because they can't help it if they're not spreading it.
Well, no, they can.
How can they help it?
Well, somebody like Joe Crosby, he'll worry them to death to the spread it, because it's coming out of his pocket. He will worry them to death until he spread it. We all know, and I think we're, Mr. Joe, but I mean, that's fact.
The center road thing about them, they've just got one big truck and one, one big truck. If they're not getting any move, because they don't have things to move.
You shouldn't make a contract if you can't handle the business. I mean, that's my opinion.
I know that center road be come and set, well, I was told.
Yeah, well, they undercut.
Seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand under bid for one.
That's what I'm saying, they undercut others, but you look how many, rightups they had versus the other one. It was pitiful. It, this is not about trying to put the farmer out of business at all. All this is, is, is to make sure the farmer and the general public can live together. I mean, that's what this purpose is for.
That statute that gives all these presumptions to, to farms is TCA forty-three hyphen twenty-six hyphen one-oh-three. You wanna look at that?
What was that again, hurry?
Forty-three hyphen twenty-six hyphen one-oh-three. And it's, it's styled, farms presumed, not nuisance. It's a pretty strong statute for, for farmers.
And Mr. Ben Rogers said he would take this and work it up for us and go see what he could do with it.
So who are they gonna pay the fines to?
Well, we need to, they need to pay Van Buren County or the county that it's being dumped on.
I agree, but here it says soil conservation shall inspect area at any time.
Here's the thing. The reason that right there is in there. The Soil Conservation, they looked up one of the numbers, and correct me if I'm wrong here. And whenever they looked the number up for where they were supposed to be on the land, the land was actually in Alabama or Mississippi. It wasn't even close. Their, their, their information was totally wrong. But they said it was on a farm up here, and whenever they looked it up, it was in another county, another state.
And I do know when Daniel and them went to do the water test, they did tell them the second time they was trespassing.
Yes, they would not let Soil Conservation own the property.
They was pulling water samples when they started spreading it.
Yeah.
There's gonna be a time limit on it, whatever many days. It just, before me or you or John Doe takes it, they ought to be able to Soil Conservation or to be able to go in there and pull a sample at any time they want to.
Well, same way without there. There is no telling how many years they've used that in front of the house. And there's, well, I shouldn't say there's no way, but it's hard to believe that you could put that many tons on something and it not be overkill. May not be, but I mean, because they're not just bringing two or three tons. I mean, they are stacking it as high as they could get it and using the payload, and it just kept on. It is a mountain out there. And that's why I think you need to be able to record the number of tons that come in, the date they came in. I mean, they need to be a log right there for that truck driver to sign. And if he don't sign it, then it needs to be on him.
Landowners have to have a permit to have it dumped?
No.
Nope.
If you own the land, you can't, if you lease the land, landowners have to sign off. And you, you can lease rent it, can put that on it.
But that's just between them and owner.
Everybody has to know. You gotta just, I can't come up here and rent your place and put it on without you knowing and signing off on it.
Let's move on. Mr. Brock, did you have something under new business?
Yes. Good evening. Two things. Give Mr. Brock. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This first, the top document. I'll just read over that and see if, just link this entered into, uh, that it was acknowledged before the commission is what my wishes are for this. Basically says on September the eighth of two thousand twenty-three, the chief deputy conducted an audit of the jail keys for the Van Buren County Jail Sheriff's Office. Found all the keys were accounted for except for five master keys. Those master keys open every interior jail door, including the doors that would allow access to exit doors from within the facility. So we did some history on this. On May the fourteenth of two thousand eighteen, Mr. Campbell, who was formerly a deputy and jail administrator, took possession of nine keys, master keys marked EC three-nine. And those are the master keys, and you can see the attached list that shows where he received those nine, and he signed off and initialed that. Upon my election, uh, previous Sheriff Carter gave me his key. The previous jail administrator, when he left, he, Mr. Campbell, he gave his keys to the current jail administrator, Mr. Grissom. There's one master key that's on our emergency key ring set that's located in the tower in the jail. And then we have another master key that's on a key ring that we refer to as the bullpen keys. And that is the key that regulates the door for us to bring our inmates from the jail into the courtroom back and forth. So with that being said, September the eighth, the chief deputy Caldwell made a phone call to the previous chief and jail administrator, Mr. Campbell, to ask about the unaccounted-for keys, and Mr. Campbell informed him that during Sheriff Carter's tenure here, that there was a report that one jail employee, it said Kevin Bivins was seen on camera removing one of the master keys from the jail tower, and then they confronted him and questioned him, and he claimed that it was lost. According to Mr. Campbell, uh, and it's either lost or misplaced. No date was provided for that interaction or that discussion between the previous administration. So taking that into account, and just wanted the commission to know and just to have it documented, um, that taking that into account, four known keys and the one lost key, this audit finds that there are still four masters that are missing and which would control all the ingress and egress to the security areas of the jail.
How much would it cost for you to change the locks? Or it can even be done?
I think we've talked about the keys, and someone told me that the keys were like five hundred dollars. So if the keys, five hundred, yeah, each. If the keys five hundred dollars, I can only imagine what the locks would be.
You could, I think you could have them rekeyed.
Yeah, have them rekeyed.
But it'll be like you said, it'll probably be five hundred dollars each.
Yeah.
Yeah.
May I say something?
Yes, sir.
I was talking to the election commission, and this is just kind of running in with what you have. And when he found out that the master key that Greg had was lost, he's requesting that his locks be rekeyed. And he's got a grant that he's gonna do his under to rekey at least the two front doors. And I said, county mayor shouldn't have a key to your office anyway. He's gonna rekey those and do those under a grant that just happened to come in for him. That's, lost keys is an issue.
Yeah.
I think be able to get a price while the locksmith is here.
Yeah, I would say probably with all the debate of election securities, probably a lot of the grants are available for him. I don't care to try to explore it, you know, just wanted that made known. The key that I've been given has been in my pocket since September the first last year. All the other keys are in a locked room accounted for, but.
Still five missed?
Yeah, five missed and one supposedly that's been lost, so.
It's missing too.
No missing.
It's missing, yeah. It's not a good, not a good feeling, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make that public knowledge to you guys as the commission and have that recorded in the minutes that we've done that, if we could.
Only, our only other alternative would be to have them rekeyed, you know, to be secure. You know what I'm saying?
Well, Mr. Bivins still working for you?
Yeah, I just learned, and I just, you know, all of this has kind of come to light to me.
But it didn't come to light till you bung it up, huh, the key was lost?
Yeah, well, no, Mr. Campbell didn't tell me he had had that conversation with Mr. Bivins. That conversation with Mr. Bivins was not between me and Mr. Bivins. That was between the previous administration because he worked for them as well.
He didn't tell Mr. Carter it was lost neither.
Jared Campbell it was lost during the last administration. Yeah.
And Campbell didn't tell Carter?
I, I don't know that answer, Mr. Smith. I'm sorry. But you guys have it. We can talk about that more. It's just something that come up this last couple of weeks. And then I have the second document that I gave you is for an item of new business. A member of the sheriff's office recently was able to attend some C task training on evidence and property control. And of course, the C task training was free and didn't cost the county anything, but it was good training for us, current, up-to-date training. And we found a lot of the things that they're encouraging us to do, we were already doing. But one of the things that we found that was a discrepancy was they said it wasn't a wise choice to house your seized or forfeited weapons in the same armory with your duty weapons. And we have been and had been, and it hadn't been an issue to my knowledge. But they said it's just not good practice. So we have moved the seized and forfeited weapons, evidentiary weapons, uh, from our duty armory into the evidence room, but it's just open shelves in there. So what I've done is tried to duplicate what we're, how we're currently storing weapons in our armory and found that I can duplicate that storage for fifteen hundred dollars. So I'd like to ask the commission to approve an amendment to take fifteen hundred dollars from the Van Buren Sheriff's Office Drug Fund and spend the fifteen hundred dollars to update the evidence closet to house and store these evidentiary weapons.
Did you use the drug fund money for rekeying those locks?
I don't think so.
He's not in a fire.
No way around that, huh?
I think so. I did put the existing total. I checked that with the trustee's office today, so. I did, I did ask other sources. One guy, after he found out I could do it for fifteen, he said, then you better buy it because there's no way I could do it for that. And I've looked online, uh, and I'm just not finding any other options. And this would kind of be a duplicate of what we already have and what's installed just in another room.
Mr. Brock?
Yes, sir.
I mean, I don't mean nothing by, who's got the key to this room? You?
To the evidence and armory?
Yeah.
Yeah, the master key, I have a key to the armory. I have a key to the evidence room, but I don't carry it with me. It's put up and locked up. Mine's locked up. There's one man that has, that's able to access the evidence and the evidentiary room and the seized weapons room. I can, but I keep my key away from me locked up. I know that maybe doesn't make sense, but I don't carry it on me. So there's one person that goes into the evidence room, and it's the evidence custodian.
If there's anything missing.
Yeah, and there's a camera on that hallway that would show.
Yeah.
It came by going to that door.
Yeah.
I thought to, I thought the drug fund money was just in, there's not?
No, actually, the only thing that we put in for expenditures under the drug fund was a thousand dollars, and that was other supplies and materials. So if you're gonna, if the commission approves that, then you'll have to make an amendment for it to come out of one twenty dash three nine zero 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 for fifteen hundred. Come, it would debit the fund balance, the one twenty dash three nine zero 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 and the amount of the fifteen hundred. And then if you wanted to put in the other supply material line item, which is five four one five oh dash four ninety-nine, and we'll get that back.
So you're saying the thousand dollars in that line is coming out of the drug fund already?
That's what they put for expenditures is a thousand. You have that money in there, but it's in the total fund balance. And we pulled it out for the expenditures because they, they looked at what was previously done this past year for the drug fund. I mean, you have that money in there, in the, in the fund, the total fund balance, but you just have to move it into a line I can spend it out of.
Right. I just was unaware that there was a thousand dollars already supposedly moved out of it.
That you can spend out of it, right? That you can spend out of it.
They put a thousand in that line.
Not that it's been spent out of it already, no.
Okay. Third, you can prove. Give me them numbers again.
One twenty, thirty-nine thousand and five one four nine oh, huh?
One twenty-two.
One twenty-two.
Dash three nine zero zero zero, which is the total fund balance.
Fifty-one four ninety?
The fifty-four one fifty dash four ninety-nine, other supplies and materials.
Is that? Is that agreeable with you, Mr. Brock?
Into what?
Into five four one five oh dash four ninety-nine.
Five four one five oh?
Mm-hmm, four ninety-nine.
I don't have that one on my. I don't have that one on my.
From your buddy? Or one twenty-two?
I just have a copy of it. Four ninety-nine, you say?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I have it here. If I want to look at it.
That's fine. That's fine.
Is that okay with you?
Yes.
Okay, do I hear a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Woodley made the motion, Mr. Chandler seconded. Roll call.
Michael Chandler?
Yes.
Jordan Long?
Yes.
Abadini?
Yes.
Harry Hickey?
Yes.
Harry Hodges?
Yes.
Dusty Maywell?
Yes.
Kenny Simeon?
Yes.
Rick Wall?
Yes.
Michael Woodley?
Yes.
Want to wish to change your vote? Motion carried.
Thank you, folks.
Yes, sir. Any more new business, Mayor?
I don't have any. Some old business. What about the convenience center out in District Four?
We haven't bought it yet. October, the first part of October.
October is before we can buy under this grant, but I've still got to get it through Mr. Tommy Lee through the committee there, you know, planning commission, because it's less than five acres.
Did you hear that?
And so we, we may even have to run it in front of the planning commission to have reported to John out there. You know, either way, septic tank over that. That may be something. I need to call Tommy tomorrow to find out for sure.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second. Motion made, seconded, and we adjourn. Hold in favor? Adjourned.